Welcome everyone to the City Council meeting for Eugene, for Eugene, for June 9. Welcome everyone here and at home. First up this evening, we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag in honor of Flag Day on June 14th. Councillor Evans will lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene's residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have 20 people signed up. So first up is Stephen Hyatt, followed by Ali Valkyrie.
I'm Steve Hyatt. I live in the River Road District of Eugene. I'd like to consider tonight the word "public." Public is generally used to refer to the people or citizens of the city, state, or country. I am concerned tonight that our public servants, the city government, the police, and so on, have finally abandoned the people that they have sworn to serve. Right now, giving all pretense of serving the people, they are looking to considering the final privatization of the last public area of Eugene, and that is Keysee Square. They have slowly been taking this place away from the public and turning it over to for-profit businesses. They tore down the only public place to sit and rented space to food carts to use during the day. These carts fill the plaza with chairs for use by their paying customers instead of the general public. And as a person with spinal stenosis, after I'm on my feet for about 15 minutes, I really have to sit down for a minute to get the pain to go away and I can finish my walk. These carts fill the -- ah, these carts have worked out a deal that basically allows them to use public property for their profit without having to maintain buildings or restrooms for their customers, and it gives them a big advantage over other restaurants in the city. Now, the owners of the food carts want Keysee Square to be closed at night so they don't have to clean up human waste that is left in the square due to the lack of restrooms. This is another direct attack on the unhoused people of Eugene, taking away the one place they can be. Instead of this, the city should ban the food carts from the plaza and put benches and restrooms for the people. I can think of no public good that can be accomplished by waging a war on homeless people. The city has been spending a lot of money, the public's money, to do this. I hope soon to see a report on how much this endeavor has cost the taxpayer in public. I hope that the city would release this information without requiring the people to file a formal request for their public records. I'm especially interested in how much the city has spent on the April 4 Whoville closure as well as the accumulated price tag for the continued harassment of the Whos. Eugene needs at least one place where people can be without being arrested for being there. It doesn't have to be Keysee Square, but it has to be somewhere.
I wish to remind everyone that we try to maintain a level of civility here and treat everybody with respect and hear everybody's voices with respect. Ali Valkyrie is next, followed by Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton.
And for the record, the citizenry also respects a certain amount of civility in how our fellow beings are treated. Last Monday, it was reported that EPD's Party Patrol cited 58 students around the university area the weekend before, and most of these citations were for either open container or public or a nation. I find that interesting because all this talk around that exact same kind of bad behavior has been centered around downtown and Keysee Square, and yet I can't remember a weekend, and I checked police records where 58 people were ticketed downtown for such offenses. Behavior in the university area has been an issue for many years now. Not only did you craft an entire ordinance to focus on the problem, you have your own specific police unit just to deal with the behavior. I wonder why in the face of all these problems in the university area, you haven't suggested a curfew on the university district? After all, that's the best idea you can come up with for Keysee Square, and I think it's been well determined that the university area has a bigger issue than downtown. After all, there was never been a riot in Keysee Square that involved 200 homeless people and needed 40 cops to break up. If you need a reminder of that, it's on YouTube. So if you still have to cite 58 people after passing ordinances that were supposed to prevent this behavior, why is Keysee Square the focus of a curfew? Oh, right, because it's not about the behavior itself, it's really about who's committing the behavior, and frankly, that's so obvious, you should really be embarrassed. I'd like to share an observation from further north. There's a group of homeless people who live under the Steel Bridge in Portland. I've been walking past them every day now for two months. They're completely within sight of a no trespassing sign, and yet the police don't move them. Yesterday, I was walking past them, and a police car drove and slowed down, and for a second, I thought, oh, this is finally it. But the police car kept going, and a block away, I saw a Portland police officer taking a report in front of a car with a smashed window. Now, that's pretty interesting because anyone in Eugene who's ever reported a smashed window will tell you that Eugene police don't come out for such things. They cite budget issues as the reason, and yet a group of folks living under a bridge here would definitely not last two months with the cops driving by every single day and not bothering them. It seems that the Portland police have very different priorities, and this is reflected in their crime rate. Eugene not only has a higher property crime rate than Portland, Eugene's actually got one of the highest property crime rates in the entire nation. We are more than twice the national average. We're above the 80th percentile for property crime. And lack of money is not the issue. Portland has four times the population of Eugene, four times the amount of uniformed officers on the ground, and only three times the amount of budget. So with less money, they are preventing property crime a lot better. Maybe this has something to do with the fact that they pay attention to car break-ins more so than homeless campers. Think about it. Thanks.
Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton is next, followed by Valen Crimbo.
My name's Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton. I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. It was difficult to listen to your work session and listen to you go round and round talking about dogs and licensing. It seems like a charade, and really not in a good use of time. It's difficult. I think what you're really talking about is trying to create another tool to keep people out of downtown who disrupt business and according to the business owners. And so why are you wasting everybody's time talking about dogs and licensing? That's just really not what you were elected to do. If we have an issue with homelessness, let's talk about homelessness. If people need a Portland Lou and you need money, let's talk about fundraising and getting the Portland Lou down here. Let's create solutions, not impediments, not different ways to discriminate against people, not different ways to indiscriminately and abuse police power against a certain group of people. This is not about dog licenses. That's a charade. I'd really like this council to start talking about ways to help people out instead of ways to punish people about something they can't do anything about. That's inhumane. So it's a human rights issue, not a dog licensing issue. Thank you.
Valen Crimbo is next, followed by Michael Adams.
My name's Valen Crimbo, and I live in Springfield.
Is it working? No, it's not working.
So my name's Valen Crimbo, and I live in Springfield, but I'm in favor of first day sick pay, and I just had a statement I wanted to make about that. I work for Albertson's, and I've worked in the grocery industry for about 40 years. In our workplace, we serve the public. Having earned first day sick pay would ensure that we work in a healthy work environment where sickness is not brought there because of economic hardship. No one should have to work sick. It's not a productive, successful environment. We all want our businesses to be successful. Let's do it in a healthy way. Everybody deserves to have a day to recover from illness. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next up is Michael Adams, followed by Sue Sierra-Lupi.
I'm Michael Adams, and I live in Councillor Zelenka's Ward. So when it comes to downtown, I hear the council state that they want to revitalize it. However, when you think about it, you're actually militarizing it. This goes against the rich history of Eugene and its claim of human rights. I say "claim" because it is slowly washing away as more and more rules are made and police are given more and more authority based on the direction that the council wants them to go. Councillor Evans, you were quoted as saying to the Weekly, "A ban on smoking downtown would decrease aggressive behavior and illegal activities such as drug use and dealing," end quote. I ask you, do I look like a drug dealer? Have I exhibited the kind of aggressive behavior you cite as potentially decreasing? It was stated tonight that some people want to go downtown but don't want to spend money. I couldn't agree more. But what about the people that want to step away from the crowd for a smoke and/or a simple breather? Essentially, you would chase away the money spenders, which has been explicitly stated as the type of people you want. Spoke of militarization of the city's laws, and I mean it. In Japan, in the military bases, military members are not allowed to set foot outside the base for fear of danger. In much the same way, there are some members of the police department here whose actions of harassment could be deemed as parallels to the dangers military members and their families are subject to in the example above. Oh, where did I go? Although I say harassment, they are only doing their jobs. They're following orders. Who's responsible for their orders? You tell me. Seems like if I follow the route back, it makes -- is the council making the laws? I bring this up because if I want to smoke, then I have to find an area that is safe to do so, if you pass this rule, or face the harassment of the police. Wait, they're doing their job. Let's bring up business. Many people say homeless people and street kids, et cetera, are responsible for deterring away customers. I say large bar crowds are deterrent to the customers you seek. I will not go to any place, just for clarification, that is busy and has lots of people, just as I will not go to a business that does not allow me to peruse without buying. A lack of restrooms also makes for a deterrent, so I cannot use the bathroom in most businesses unless I'm paying. Just for a point of reference, I have a neighbor across that parties well into the morning on any given night. When I made a noise complaint, one squad car showed up, flipped the siren a couple times, whoop, whoop, and used the spotlight. Wow, that was great. I had been very clear that there was well over 100 people in that apartment, yet we treat our student housing as above the law, basically. That's how it appears to me. So who really makes the rules here? Let me close with this following real fast. It's from HumanRightsCity.org, something you should be familiar with. "Human rights entails both rights and obligations. States assume obligations and duties under international law to respect, to protect, and to fulfill human rights. The obligation to respect means that states must refrain from interfering with or curtailing the enjoyment of human rights," refer to Keysee Square. "The obligation to protect requires states to protect individuals and groups against human rights abuses, homelessness. The obligation to fulfill means that states must take positive action to facilitate the enjoyment of basic human rights."
Thank you. Sue Sierra-Lupi is next, followed by Reverend Wayne Martin.
Can you hear me? I have microphone issues.
Can.
You can? You want me to speak up? Is that okay? Okay, thank you. My name is Sue Sierra-Lupi, and my council representative is George Brown. Thank you. Where are you? Oh, there you are. I have lived in his ward for over 20 years. A few weeks ago, the neighbors' USDA held their conference in Arnhem City. Sorry. Occupy Medical was -- that's okay? All right. Occupy Medical was selected through your support as a finalist for the national award. This conference was an educational experience for us all. Networking with fellow activists around the nation gave us such inspiration. One of our doctors estimated, after calibrating our patient load and the cost of care Occupy Medical offers, that we are saving Lane County approximately $10,000 per week. We understand that this is one of the reasons that you, as members of City Council, support us. We have been asked before what else our city can do to support our endeavor. We have very few needs. We patched together our clinic with what we have. What we really need right now is for you, as City Council, and your staff, to do what you can to support our patients and protect them from harm. We are still struggling to play catch-up from the damage from a horrendous winter and from unfortunate decisions from City Council. It is still one of our biggest endeavors to treat the damage done by the destruction of Whoville. I do not know what will happen after this week's unpleasant decision. I do not know what we will have to do in order to help the people that are damaged by more restrictions and penal colony options exercised by City Council should they choose to close our city gates to those that need help the most. Community needs, community. By isolating people, you make my job extremely difficult. I need bathrooms for our people. I need places for them to safely gather. I need places for them to put their sharps. I need that kind of help. That's all I'm asking. Please protect our patients from harm.
Reverend Wayne Martin is next, followed by Plato Wellman.
I'm Wayne Martin. I live in George Brown's district. I want to make a brief comment about the action that took place on April 4. I'm a Vietnam vet. I was in explosive ordinance disposal units. I was the officer in charge. We lived often with the threat of some kind of surprise action all the time. I still think about that. When I went to the scene on April 4, I was astonished. I thought we had an understanding, and maybe we didn't have an ironclad one, but is that necessary? I thought we had an understanding that folks were going to start getting their things together, have their little yard sales, and be ready to move. Since April 4, it's taken me two months to get out of my body what that -- pardon me -- what that assault did to me, let alone what it did to them. I thought I'd just give you that witness. I want to correct a misconception. Not all of us who work on behalf of just the human needs and the psychological needs of homeless people are dissidents, but I've heard many people from this room refer to us as dissidents. We should clear that up so we don't use that language anymore. Some of us, not many, have automobiles, and we're being tasked all the time now, two or three of us who can show up, to go to this site, put all their blankets and their sleeping bags, their wet tents, their medicines, and their chaos into our cars, and try to find a place where they can be safe. We're trying to follow the codes of the city and of the county. We're getting exhausted. It's not only exhausting for us, it's exhausting for them. I'm almost 71, and I'm one of the few people in this advocacy community with a car. So please, take into consideration, how much are you accomplishing by getting people roustied up who can barely tolerate what I tolerated on April 4? And it's happening currently and repeatedly. Please. I'll work with you. My phone number's 831-601-0022.
Thank you. Plato Wellman is next, followed by William Ward.
Excuse me if I speak fast, but I'm going to try to connect the dots between a multiplicity of issues tonight. So let's start with Keysee Square, not Broadway Plaza, but Keysee Square and the curfew. Not only is this a blatant and unnecessary attack on the homeless citizens of our community, but it's also an unnecessary attack on the freedoms of all the people of Eugene by violating the sanctity of public space that we deserve. I've met up with friends at that park after 11:00 PM to play music, to go on bike rides, even to hang out and sober up before going home. My point is not all nighttime activity in that park is illegal or illegitimate, and the people deserve the right to have an open public space where they don't have to spend money. They deserve to have the right to be there. You already have laws to address all the illegal activity that you say this curfew will address, so why create this curfew? An old wise saying goes, "By creating more laws, more criminals are created," and I think you could take heed to that saying. On that note, next week, you will be discussing a proposed ban on secondary dwellings on a private lot of residence. I ask why once again. Having a secondary dwelling on a lot is a popular trend in Eugene. It's positive. It provides cheap rent for renters, and it provides economic benefit for homeowners. Micro housing is a rising trend given these hard economic times, and it's a rising trend for the citizens of Eugene. And your job as our elected representatives is to facilitate the wishes of the people, the wishes of the citizens of this community. Our government was founded upon a long, rich philosophical tradition of liberalism and the values of civic liberty and the values of the restraint of government to impose its laws upon the citizens. By passing these laws, you're slapping Thomas Jefferson in the face metaphorically. As a citizen, these trends, these political trends disturb me because your job is to work for the people of this city, the people in this room, the people on the streets. And on that note, I want to talk about tax handouts to out-of-state national corporations that compete with local businesses. These tax breaks are not helping our community as the profits, the fruits of these tax breaks, go to corporate headquarters outside of our community. And so in conclusion, I just ask you to remember why you are sitting up there. Whose interest do you represent? Do you represent us, the people? Do you represent out-of-state businesses? I hope it's the people. Have a great night. Peace and love.
William Ward is next, followed by Brian Palmer.
Hi, I'm Betty Taylor's Ward. I'm here also about tax credits. The City Eugene Council seems to be able to believe that they can tell the future of our economic future. I can see that only the reason they pay our tax credits, which is our future, for a short-term, instant gratification, artificial growth. Maybe it's to make them look good so they can get reelected. But all the history from Eugene's history of these tax credits have done nothing but cost money. Hyundai, through Mayor Torrey, Hape, councilman pushing that, cost Eugene between $35 and $50 million, depending how you figure out cost, and it's still an empty building. And now the state's pushing, trying to get a tax credit to get a company in there. All the new apartment buildings in Eugene that are out-of-state companies, out-of-state labor lowering property values, now there's in Craigslist for houses for rent, or in five to over 600, where there's normally only 40 to 60 before those apartments came in. The City Council's -- maybe the City Council's mayor need to be paid for -- paid Corvallis from Conynville to take a sabbatical or a course to go see how a college town can survive, have a healthy downtown, thriving economy, without giving away the farm and tax credits to out-of-state big-box stores and corporations like Hyundai. There's just -- and some of the members up there, I believe, pushed to change zoning from small industrial to commercial, to put loaves in next to Home Depot. I don't know what the reason's for. One of the best-rated companies in the United States as far as home improvements is Jourys, who was, I believe at the time, was owned by the family that started it, and now it's locally owned. Why are we bringing in competition, sending our money out of state? Sure, you get 3% to 5% cheaper goods at Walmart, but when you pay 3% to 5% more money, you get 9% to 12% more money that stays in our community. And there's no infrastructure costs to the city, killing our local companies. I think there should be a law passed that no tax credits through -- can be given away by the City Council without approval of a general vote of the public. Anything's got to be better than what we're functioning on now in our future. And why are we giving away the farm and by giving these tax credits? And look around. All our companies are moving to Springfield. They're not playing this game. I don't know where the answer is, but sure it's not in tax credits. Sure, it's not instant gratification where you get, see things going up, pay construction workers, all this, but then you have all these empty buildings, and you're paying for it with our future and our grandkids' future. I moved here 40 years ago. The city had great potential, but boy, it just seems to be going downhill with it, expanding urban growth for -- thank you.
Brian Palmer is next, followed by Ralph Parshall.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Brian Palmer, and I live in Councillor Evans' Ward. I've attended two of the mandated sick leave meetings, and I didn't bring any statistics with me tonight. At some point, I realized that the statistics don't matter, and it's pretty disappointing. And I've been trying to put my head around this, how people could see this as such a good thing, because I've looked at the numbers and I've talked to some people and so on. What I have figured out is this is a popularity contest. That's all it is. And I'm pretty sure that there are some people on the City Council that will vote to win the popularity contest. And if it's to the detriment of the community, so be it. They're going to win the popularity contest. I wish that I had coined the phrase 100 years ago that says, "When you rob Peter to pay Paul, you get Paul's support every time." When I was in the service, I don't know how many officers I served under, but 99% of them were a credit to the uniform. To this day, I can remember the two or three that were not a credit to the uniform, and it was sad to see a person in that position not be a credit to the uniform. If you're voting, when this thing is voted on, to win a popularity contest because you will be more popular, there'll be more people that like you than don't like you. You'll win. If that's your vote, you don't deserve the title that you carry. You don't deserve the office that you hold. That's no way to make a decision. Thank you.
Ralph Parshall is next, followed by Eric Richardson.
Good evening, Mayor, Councillors, City Manager. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Ralph Parshall. I live in George Poling's Ward. I did not prepare a statement today. I speak from the heart. I'm a -- I run a business here in town, and I'm compelled to ask why we're dealing with public policy that will have an effect on the rights of an employer to designate how he pays his employees. I feel that the City Council should be spending their energies on developing living wage jobs here in Eugene, to spend time on issues like this when we need to be spending all of our efforts having jobs for people that are trying to support their families instead of minimum-wage jobs where our kids don't have a job now because they're full of people trying to support their families. That's awful, and that's a detriment to you because you are our leaders here. We elected you to bring about a lifestyle here that makes a difference and to look at these issues where we need jobs. That's what we need. That's what we need in this community. We don't need handouts, we need jobs. And you need to take a look at what you're doing for this community with regards to jobs. There are many, many families here that don't have sick leave, including my employees. But that's not the answer. Sick leave is not the answer. A living-wage job is the answer. That's what they want. They don't need extra five days off. They need a job. Get them a job, instead of a minimum-wage job where they have to work two or three jobs to support their families. That's awful. And I challenge you to look into your hearts and see if it does make a difference. Thank you.
Eric Richardson is next, followed by Ryan Sterns.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Eric Richardson, and I am a resident of Ward 7. I'd like to just talk about the facts as they are on the ground today. Many families are raising families on minimum-wage jobs, and I happen to have done so myself. I'm a father of five, and I'm here as, in my role as a president of the Eugene Springfield branch of the NAACP. One of the many great things about living in Eugene is the real effort so many of us make to create a community where everyone is valued. But there are times when we must take action and make changes to improve the lives of working people. We have an opportunity to take a step forward for our friends and neighbors who don't have the access to paid sick time where they work. We must stand up for our neighbors who are less likely to have access to paid sick time and more challenged by not having it than others. Those would be people of color, low-income workers, and single parents. Many of these folk have no choice but to work sick when the inevitable illness arises and when, or when they have a sick child, because they aren't able to even take a single day off. This may lead to real repercussions for their families. For too many folks, even just one or two days of lost pay can equal that month's grocery bill. This is especially true for families of color. In our state, 30% of Latinos, African-Americans, and Native Americans are living in poverty, something that makes six days integral to helping families get out of that poverty and to help them keep others from the brink. Sick days are just one important way we can increase equity, improve economic security, and make the workplace more fair and just for all. Let's not let this opportunity to make real change pass by. Commitment calls for action. If we are truly a community that values our people, then we as a community must support paid sick days. This is an important moment in our city's history. You can help to remove this barrier to success for working families, improve public well-being, and ensure that all people have the same opportunities to be healthy, safe, and have dignity while at work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Sterns is next, followed by Barb Prentice.
Hello. My name is Ryan Sterns. I'm homeless. I just came to say that yesterday, there was a, we have our small homeless camp slash protest called Whoville, and five members of it got arrested. I was a sixth that was the lucky one. And tonight, these guys, I was supposedly getting out of jail, and their stuff, they can't get tonight. So what we're down to is four blankets, one tent, and six guys. And we're gonna be criminally trespassing somewhere in Eugene, the same charge that they're arrested for tonight. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Barb Prentice is next, followed by Art Bowman.
Good evening. I'm Barb Prentice, and I live in Greg Evans Ward. You've often heard a friend of mine sit here and say, "Aren't we always tired, aren't we all tired of this?" I always smile when he says it, but it's not really a laughing matter. It was two months ago that the city closed Whoville with no viable options for the 30 or so people living there. Some of them dispersed to whatever hinterlands they had been in before. Some have been on the city streets, living as best they can. A small group, and that's exactly who he was talking about, has tried to stay together and recreate the community that they had built. I can't count the number of times they've been cited for trespassing or illegal camping and forced to move. Personally, I helped move three times, but many others have done much more. Yesterday, several former Who's were arrested and spent a night in jail for camping illegally on ODOT land, and they were arrested by Eugene City Police. And this is what I wrote a few hours ago. What possible good did this accomplish? When released this afternoon? Where could they go? But they weren't released this afternoon, although the charges were dropped. And now, as you've heard, they've been released, and they can't get their stuff, and they're out on the streets with nothing. The city has done a great job of declaring where people can't sleep. When will we find where they can? Aren't we all tired of this?
Art Bowman is next, followed by Jean Stacey.
Art Bowman, First Ward. I've seen a disturbing picture emerge in the past few weeks, and it reminds me of several things. I see a downtown where people are excluded, whether you want it or not, by a patchwork of laws designed to keep a specific class of people going there. Where do they go? If they're lucky, at a few refugee camps that are legally tolerated on the outskirts of the city. If not, they are hunted from place to place. Within this downtown where they're excluded, I see basically an effort at gentrification that excludes not just these people, but others. Park benches are removed. That affects the elderly. That affects the handicapped. Fewer public spaces for people to stop and rest. This is called gentrification. It reminds me of other cities I've lived in, particularly in New York, where the target group was Black and Hispanic teenagers. I'm sure you're all familiar with some of the patchwork of laws they used there. Stop and frisk, truancy laws that seemingly were never enforced against white teenagers, and things like that. There, often, these people were shipped to upstate, where the prison system worked as an economic development system for upstate New York. Their former neighborhoods were gentrified and turned into condos. Kind of a win-win situation. Well, not for everyone, but for developers and people who run prisons. Is that, this seems to be what's happening here. Regardless of whether your intentions, this seems to be an economic process that's been set into order. If it's followed to fruition the way it has in other cities, New York, Chicago, San Francisco, Oakland, even smaller cities like Columbus, Ohio, which is a comparable city, or Ann Arbor, Michigan, you'll find other people excluded. People who have currently been thriving here. Community performing arts groups, small, offbeat independent businesses. The sort of things that attract people to downtown will be taken away. Art galleries. Instead, you'll just find a bar and restaurant row with high-priced boutiques. Low and moderate-income people won't be able to afford to live in or near downtown. This is what will happen in a best-case scenario. What's more likely to happen is after this infrastructure of small, independent businesses, cultural groups, and things like that are displaced, those other businesses will fail in the next downturn, or when this other one sputters out, then you'll be back where you started from. I want you to be careful. I am not sure I've heard something about goals. I haven't seen input. Who makes the decisions to remove park benches? Who makes the decision to remove walls for people to sit in? I'm surprised you haven't gotten rid of the water fountains yet to encourage more people to buy sodas, but I'm sure that's coming. I've seen payphones taken away, so people who can't afford cellphones can't use them. Thank you.
Jean Stacey is next, followed by Emily Simple.
Good evening, Jean Stacey. I am always, when I come here, puzzled by things that seem in conflict to me about things that are said. Like, I remember when we were here last week, you made the point that you all are not punishing situations, you're punishing behaviors. And therefore, I find it very difficult to understand, since we have laws against all the behaviors that you want to prohibit, why we have to shut down a park. I get confused when the city manager reassures you, "This is something we can do," because Portland does it. Portland doesn't shut down all of its public spaces. It has squares that are open all night. But he didn't bother to give you that information. I notice that every time you have discussions, it's always about the homeless. We never think about the homeless. We think about the businesses. Why are we shutting down Keyzee Square? Why? For business people. If you go down there, you will know it's primarily youth in Keyzee Square. Youth who are fleeing their homes. Youth who have no place else in Eugene to go. If a young woman doesn't want to be raped, if a young man doesn't want to be attacked or robbed, the only place he can go legally is Keyzee Square. You think of it as dangerous for business. They think of it as safe for youth. It's a very different perspective. I don't think any of you want to hurt people. I really don't. I know most of you. But we have to accept that the policies that you're passing really are hurting people. When we have homeless discussions, can we have one that says, "What's good for homeless people," instead of "What's bad for business or bad for a neighborhood?" I want you, please, not to leave the kind of unfinished business you have done in the past. Going on vacation, strict directives to the city manager not to shut down Whoville without a place to go, very strict in his tacit agreement on record not to do so. But then you left without doing your part of the job to provide a place for them to go, and you allowed him to advance on you. He was gonna shut it down before you came back and could fix it. We need you to be more responsible in issues regarding the homeless.
Next is Emily Simple, followed by Vicki Nelson.
I don't know why it's not working. Sorry. Hello, my name is Emily Simple. I'm in George Brown's district. I'm an advocate for the homeless, but I'm not here in that role tonight. I'm an advocate for myself and other people who love Keyzee Square. I grew up in New York. I didn't like it there. I knew I wanted to move. I didn't know where. I was an avid reader, great escapism. I was 19 years old. I was reading sometimes A Great Notion. I tended to whip through books like a movie. And this book got slower and slower, until I was only reading a few pages every day. And I knew I was coming to Oregon. It took me 10 years, but I'm here. I love it. I've been in Eugene 30 years, and as we know, I'm not leaving. I live four blocks from Keyzee Square. I'm not afraid to walk downtown. I want to be able to do this, even when I'm awake in the night, which happens. I want a place where I can assemble and speak freely. I want to be able to go down to Keyzee Square at 3:00 in the morning and read a book with Ken, my hero, my inspiration, my guru. Please, give us a place where we can enjoy our First Amendment rights all the time. A place to gather, a place to talk, a place to read, a place possibly to practice our religion. Keep Keyzee Square open. Thank you.
Vicki Nelson is next, followed by Ruben Garcia.
Hello, I'm Vicki Nelson, and I'm in George Brown's Ward. I wanted to talk to you tonight about food carts. I actually love them. I'm all for them. I think they make a city very exciting. They give it a lot of variety. They give young chefs who have interesting ideas a place to start a business with food to see how they can be successful. And I was at a meeting today with quite a few people, and we were talking about food carts, and some questions came up. And we were wondering, do our food cart people rent space from the city? And how much do they pay? And what does the rent money go for? And we were also wondering, since food carts are a lot like restaurants, and they're similar in many ways to restaurants, they're also different, but if the carts need to offer restrooms and hand washing, because after all, they're serving food. And whether they, we were wondering about this, and whether there is a place to wash your hands, go to the bathroom, both for the person in the cart selling food and for the person outside the cart buying food. And so I decided to research this, and online, I did find a packet of information. I'm not sure this is what is the current law around here, but this is something that Lane County puts out. It's called Mobile Food Unit Plan Review, and it's about applications for mobile food-producing booths. And it says, "Restrooms are required in all four classes of food, mobile food units." They have these class systems. One is where you can just give out food that's already packaged, all the way up to, you can be a chef cutting up raw fish. So, all classes have to have a bathroom. And I'm wondering, where is the bathroom for the Keyzee Square? Where is the hand-washing station? And if you're gonna tell me it's that overpark on Willamette between 8th and 7th, I gotta tell you, that is not open all the time. I don't know if you know that. So, there needs to be an open bathroom. And as I was thinking about this, I started to think that some of the problems downtown might stem from a lack of restrooms. For instance, I'm sure restaurant managers are really annoyed when people come into their restaurants to use the bathroom but not to buy food. And we all know that, from reading in the newspaper at least once a week, that everybody's upset about urination downtown, not in a bathroom, and public defecation. So it seems possible, just possible, that a couple of restaurants downtown, specifically Portland Lou's, could go a long way towards calming the waters downtown. Homeless people and homed people who've just eaten from the food carts would have a place to go to wash their hands, go to the bathroom.
Ruben Garcia is next, followed by Sabra Markroth.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm Ruben Garcia. I own a company called Environment Control. We're a commercial cleaning company here in Eugene. Been around for 24 years, have about 70 employees. Most of them are part-time oriented. Wanted to let you know, I enjoyed Claire's editorial today, appreciated. She mentioned the word dignity. She also touched on the aspect of the employer and how important it is for them to be vetted. And also, that's really what I'm here for, is to talk about the whole research. And I hope and pray that you all don't decide on this in three or four weeks, because that's too soon. I hope we can slow down the process and take some time to research, interview, and thoroughly grasp what's involved with all these, over 10,000 employers who are involved with all these employees that, and some of us employers, by the way, cannot afford that. I know Palo Alto can afford, other companies can afford, and they already have sick leave policies in effect, but there's some of us that cannot. So, it's very important that the time is taken to research thoroughly and do some case studies of employers and about affordability. Because in a nutshell, this financial, the sick leave ordinance, the financial effect on this ordinance on over 10,000 employers will be difficult, to say the least. I believe some, if not most, of the people in favor of this measure have not really studied the ramifications. We'll have an increase of payroll, of course, increase of payroll taxes, an increase of administrative office time... administrative office time in tracking all the sick time hours. Many companies like ours have special higher-paid staff who fill in for people who are sick. We have always accommodated our sick employees for 24 years. We have never terminated them for sickness, and we never will. That's been bandied around a little bit about how horrible some employers are and what kind of trouble the employees can be in by being sick too often, but we've always been very gracious with them for 24 years. I might add, most of our employees are part-timers, working two to five hours a night. This is a second moonlighting-type job for them. They don't expect an entourage of benefits because they're taken care of by their primary employer during the daytime. And then, you know, some of them as well have two part-time jobs, and so they're doing their best to take care of their family and take care of all their needs. So, I think it's imperative, the method I definitely want you to hear tonight is that you all take the time, slow down the process, take a little time to research the ramifications financially that's going to be involved with us 10,000-plus employers in Eugene. We're not Seattle. We're not San Francisco. You know, we're not Portland, and certainly we need to give Portland a year's time to experience what they have already instituted in their town. So, it's a whole different world here, as you very well know. And so, we care about our employees. We love our employees. We keep loving them.
Last up is Sabra Markroft.
My name is Sabra Markroft. I reside currently in Ward 7, but these days think of myself more as a resident of Ward The undiscovered country of all of the people who have no place to be. I think about all the money the city spends on enforcement and all the money that's wasted on the revolving door of the hospital. I know we're beginning to address a small percentage of that by providing some respite care for people who are released from the hospital, but it will be at least a decade before we make a significant dent in that problem at this rate. You've already heard how much money Occupy Medical saves the city and the county every week. For only 10% of what's already been saved and the time it has taken to fight and carry you every single step of the way to these solutions that we have managed to find, we could have taken care of all of this with you, but yet we have to continue fighting you and carrying you on our backs every step of the way. Please, pay attention. Yet again, we have no place for people to go and a city that is eminently more comfortable punishing people than helping them, even when helping costs less money. I don't like lecturing people. I would much rather be pleasant. I would much rather get along. But you're making our lives miserable by your inaction, and you're going slow, and there needs to be a place for people. And that $20,000 that it costs to take down that last sitting space next to Keysee Square, that wall, what could we have done with it? What good could we have done with the community, with all of this volunteer labor that we so willingly give and you waste? Thank you for your time. Please do something more worthwhile with it. I would really personally appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public forum and thank everyone for coming and ask for comments from City Council. Councilor Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things real quick. I just wanted to say that the article in the Weekly did not fully quote my intentions on the smoking ordinance or the potential conversation around the smoking ordinance. And one of the main things that was not addressed in terms of what my concerns are is the public health implications of smoking in public. They are definitely there. I have talked to many people who have respiratory conditions, including myself, who have concerns about breathing that air as we go by. It's not a pleasant thing to be dealt with. So I think that as we move forward with that conversation, most likely this fall, in a work session, we will be vetting the issues around that. The second thing is with regard to paying sick leave, I want to caution everybody that we don't have draft language yet for an ordinance, so we don't have anything specific to discuss at this point in time. I will tell you from a personal perspective that I have worked at all kinds of businesses, from large corporations, large public entities, to small businesses, as well as working in a large retail environment for a national retailer. And I had a time once when I was extremely ill, had a 103 temperature, and was told to go into work. And if I didn't go to work, then I would be fired. I went to work, and they sent me home within the hour because I was that ill and that sick. I later found out that the business that I was working for, I was so young at the time, I didn't know what the, all the rules and regulations were. They had a sick leave policy or sick leave policy. So, you know, I don't know what the ultimate outcome will be in terms of the council deliberations on this, but I do think that as, going back to what Mr. Garcia said, we do need to carefully vet any kind of proposal that comes before council with regard to this legislation or potentially, or potential ordinance that may come up in the very near future. And the last thing that I want to touch on is the fact that I think that before we have our discussion on Keysee Square and what we should do with it, I would appreciate getting some data from the Police Department and other departments of the city with regard to what the actual facts are around crime and maintenance of facilities downtown and that sort of thing. I think that we need to have that kind of background information to be well-informed in terms of our deliberations.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the next item in our agenda, the consent calendar. City Council President?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Seconded. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Councilor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Thank you. Next up is item number four, the public hearing in action, resolution adopting a supplemental budget. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is to provide the council with an opportunity to hear from the public on an FY14 second supplemental budget for the city of Eugene. The supplemental budget recognizes new revenues and authorizes unanticipated changes in legal appropriations. The council was asked to take action on this item tonight. The biggest item on the FY14 supplemental budget number two is increasing appropriations in the general fund capital projects fund for City Hall per Kristi Hammett's email of May 23rd. The total project budget will be $15 million. $750,000 was appropriated in FY13. SB 2, the remaining, was appropriated in FY13 supplemental budget two. The remaining will come from the telecom fund, facility reserve, and the facility service fund, and future allocations from the capital budget, carryover balances in the general fund. This is all outlined in Attachment A of the AIS, and staff recommends approval of the motion on the second supplemental budget tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to open the hearing. We have one person signed up. That would be John Barowski.
Of course. It wouldn't be budget time without him. God bless his heart.
I didn't think I needed to tell you how to do this.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Wouldn't be a supplemental budget if I didn't come out and at least say hello and check in with y'all. As was mentioned by the city manager, the most important thing I think that you need to take note of in this supplemental budget is the funding for the City Hall. You know, this is a project that has been upfront for quite a few years now, and it was often, you know, it's going to cost $15 million, and we're going to take some of the money here and take some of the money there. And this has finally hit the pavement. You know, the rubber's hit the road. This is how City Hall will be funded. And so I think that's a great thing. I think it's good to have it out there for the citizens to see and for everybody up there to know this is exactly how City Hall will be paid for. There's money from the facility reserves that came in from a myriad of different sources. There's also some money from the telecom fund, which can be used for only certain purposes, and this is definitely a purpose that it falls into. I think Glenn would probably agree with that. There's other ones. There's a general capital transfer each year that, that's what it's used for, is to take care of the city's infrastructure and capital. So that's an appropriate one. And then the last little bit, $940,000, will come out of savings or, you know, carryover balances, which we've seen in the past in other supplemental budgets. So, people have an idea of where that money's going. So I'm really happy to see that this, this plan has finally hit the light of day. You know, we've, it's been alluded to for years now, and now we know where it can go. Other items in the supplemental budget are very, you know, incidental, some recognition of some monies from, that we have to pay for HUD for other things. But I'm just glad to see that we have a concrete plan, be able to pour some concrete possibly downtown. Now, the next big project for you is deciding what it's going to look like, and that has nothing to do with the supplemental budget, so you probably won't hear from me on that one. Thanks.
Thank you. To close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions or comments from council. Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. $2 million will be taken from the telecom balance and put into the facility reserve fund and then, I mean, in this supplemental budget. And then there'll be another $500,000 in the supplemental budget in December 2014 that will be put into the facility reserve, and it says portion of future general capital transfers. So before, is that correct?
Yes.
I've got that correct. Okay. So, so before, you know, next winter, and we're going to get our budget forecast, and we'll be talking, we'll get more details in the spring. There will inevitably be a budget deficit, just like there has been for the past few years. There will be a very familiar list of potential service cuts, services that most people regard are essential and not, you know, frivolous or luxury, but essential services, including the branch libraries. There will probably be a property tax levy for the library service next May. It may or may not pass. If it doesn't pass, those two branch libraries will be on the cutting block again. Who knows? Maybe one of the pools will show up. We don't know. I think it's really, I'm going to vote against this. I'll probably be in the minority, but... So next, next winter and next spring, when we look back and we see the budget deficit that we're faced with and all of these cuts that no one will want to make, it could be police and fire. It could be all the, you know, other things. We'll look back and we'll go, gee, you know, we just took away $2.5 million to put into the City Hall fund. We could wait till next. Now, if it's not as dire as I'm saying, we don't know what it's going to be. I think it'll be bad. There will inevitably be a deficit. So, why not leave this out and wait till next winter and spring to see what the true budget picture is? Because once, and then, and then if there is money left over and we balance the budget and we can take that money and then put it into the City Hall fund rather than put the cart before the horse, because once it goes into that facility reserve, it's going to be almost impossible to convince a majority of budget committee members to pull it back out to address the inevitable budget shortfall. So, that is why I'm opposing this. I think it's a really, I think it's premature. I think once we get our budget balanced and the outlook looks good, the revenue outlook for the city, then that's the time to take this money and put it into the City Hall fund and not, and stop cutting essential services. Thanks.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Brown is right. We had a letter from the Chair of the Human Services Commission saying, hey, please, don't designate that quarter million dollars in next year's budget as one time, designate it as ongoing. And my response to that was, it's kind of a semantic argument, because we make the budget we make each year, and that's what is being funded in the one year we have the authority to do that, and we can't put a, even though all of us will likely be here next year when we do budget, we can't require a future council budget in a particular way. It's one of the challenges I'm having with this, when I look at this, and it's pre-committing ending fund balances of $1 million for the next three years towards City Hall. And we're having conversations about closing Sheldon Pool, and we're having conversations about closing other services down, and I think this requires more of a work session than we've done so far about funding before we get to a point where we approve it. And so I'm not saying this won't be the plan we come up with at the end of the day, but I sure would like to have a lot more thorough conversation before we just cast this in stone in exclusion to all other city priorities, because I think there are other options we have with funding City Hall that we don't have with service delivery that I kind of want to balance out in the conversation. So I guess when, Mayor, when you get to the question about whether any council would have a problem with acting tonight, I certainly will be one of them, and I would probably want to move for us to move this particular piece to a future work session for discussion.
Councilor Pryor?
If we don't approve a budget tonight, knowing that we are required by law to have a budget by July 1, when would we be able to accomplish this?
Apparently it has to be done before June 30th, and I'll eventually have some comments on the whole topic when it's appropriate.
If I recall correctly, the budget that we worked on this year was not intended to solve the problem for just one year, except for just a couple of specific items, one of them being the Sheldon Library and the other one being the human service funding. My recollection is, when you created the budget, you created the budget in such a way that it solved the rest of the challenge for this year and for coming years. In other words, you created a balanced budget for this year and would not create the problem that is, I think, feared, that we'll go to the budget problem next year, and pools will be on the line, and police services will be on the line. You created a balanced budget with, save for those two items, if I recall correctly.
That's correct. What we, what we did was, is we, there was a gap that we were trying to close with ongoing dollars, and we did all of that with the exception of the library, and then there was that $250,000 at one time for HSC funding. The rest of it was actually ongoing money that closed the gap.
So you actually, if hypothetically, we go to a budget committee process next year, we wouldn't be talking about pools and stuff. You have the money to continue to operate them. You built that into this budget, and that theoretically should also be there for the next budget.
Correct. Everything else is in the budget on an ongoing basis with the exception of those two items.
So there's only two items that might theoretically be in play next year?
Yeah. One piece we don't know is, we don't know if there's a broad swing in the financial, economic situation.
Barring some shift in, barring some shift in the economy, if, as predicted, the economic forecast stays pretty much the way we think it will, we'll be talking about library, one library, not two, one branch library is what we'll be talking about, and money for human service funding, which is extremely important, and I look forward to that conversation. So, we don't need to worry about pools. We don't need to worry about the main library... So we don't need to worry about pools, we don't need to worry about the main library, we don't, you know, the, the whole thirteen items or fourteen items we had this year, we're not going to be talking about fourteen items. So the notion of what you're proposing to do with this supplemental budget perhaps does leave a couple of things into play, but not a whole host of things into play. We will want to have a conversation about human service funding, and I absolutely need to do that, but I think that conversation can't happen before July 1 on any meaningful kind of way. There is a movement afoot, we're all aware of it, to pass some sort of a library levy, to provide security for all of the libraries, not just the one that's talked about. So I think the, the prediction for next budget cycle is not as dire as we're afraid that it might be. I think it's worth considering how we're using the supplemental budget, but I don't think that we need to worry that we've got to come up with a couple of million dollars to plug a gap that you've already fixed. There's a little bit of a financial conversation, but not a giant one. I'm comfortable going ahead and approving the supplemental budget when we get to it, but I do think we have to talk about what we're going to do with those remaining two items and figure out what our solution is for them, because human service funding, to me, is something that has to be made ongoing.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the other issues for me was remembering in previous years, when there was a library levy in place, I remember the number being something in the neighborhood of five or six hundred thousand dollars that was on, on an annual basis, paid for by the levy that we brought into the general fund budget in those years. And am I recalling that relatively closely? Isn't that about the number we had?
Could you say that number one more time?
It was like five or six hundred thousand a year that we brought into the general fund from the library levy?
Five, six hundred thousand per year? I think it was several millions. Five, six million per year?
But I mean for the course of a four-year levy, right? Was that an annualized number?
I believe it was the annual?
That was, I think it was each year.
Each year.
But it was all the library. It was the main library.
Yeah, I'm talking about the difference in the general fund, though. Anyway, point being, it was a fairly large number.
Yes.
We're talking about a million dollars here. My point is, wasn't necessarily about the fact that we still have some manner of budget crisis, because you guys have done a wonderful job with the planning there. What I'm saying is, much like the letter we got from Human Services, I didn't want to consider that request in isolation of other city priorities. What I'm seeing here says, we're going to commit in the next three years a hundred thousand dollars off, first hundred thousand dollars of extra, and by the way, we had a lot of fight about reserves. But this is saying, we're planning on having a million dollars extra we don't spend outside of reserves for the next three years, and the first thing we're going to commit it to is City Hall. I'm wondering if we have that kind of money, should we be floating the library levy? I mean, this is the kind of relative conversation we should have at a work session and not consider these things in isolation. That's my point of view.
So my understanding from the comments that Counselor Clark has made is that he does, he objects to taking action tonight. So I'm going to move on to the next.
I do have a couple of quick comments, but when we talk about five hundred thousand dollars per year, council policy right now sets aside the first nine hundred thousand for facilities, capital improvements, the first, this proposal is that the first half a million of that would go towards City Hall, so it's not sort of new money out of a new policy, so that's the first piece. Second piece is, is actually Attachment A says amount remaining to be funded if funds are available, and so that still ensures that the funds actually have to be available in order to implement the plan. Part of a significant reason for this is, we can't move forward to build the City Hall on the timeline that the council has said you want the City Hall built without dollars to do so. And so part of this is actually to have the authority to enter into contracts and to keep moving on a project that the council has, to this point, said is an important priority project for you. So, so that's what I would say. This actually isn't new policy, it's just re-appropriating already existing policy for that first nine hundred thousand. Or prioritizing it, I should say.
So I believe that we had a, is it Wednesday, that we have kind of a light calendar?
And that would be an option to come back and talk.
Yes, that's what I was thinking. Yep. All right. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Eugene City Council and convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal District. Public hearing and action resolution adopting a supplemental budget. City Manager?
This public hearing is to provide the council with an opportunity to hear from the public on an FY14 second supplemental budget for the Urban Renewal Agency. The supplemental budget recognizes new revenues and authorizes unanticipated changes in legal appropriations, and the council is asked to take action on this tonight.
There is no one signed up for this hearing, so I'm going to close the hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from City Council. A, I know the objection is there, so we'll put that in the next meeting as well.
Are you objecting to this one as well? I'm not.
He is not? Okay. Then if there's, is it, so there's no objection to taking action on this tonight?
I move to adopt Resolution 1071, adopting a supplemental budget, making appropriations for the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. There are seven here. Counselor Soret?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene the meeting of the Eugene City Council. Item number six, public hearing and action, a resolution electing to receive state revenue sharing funds. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is to provide the council with an opportunity to hear from the public on the FY15 budget for the City of Eugene, as approved by the Budget Committee. The council is asked to take action on the FY15 budget tonight.
All right. I have five people signed up to testify. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must have completed a request to speak form. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, if you're Eugene resident, your ward if known. You'll have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red lights indicate the end of three minutes. And first up is Carol Hildebrand, followed by Juan Carlos Valle.
Good evening, Mayor Piercy and members of the City Council. I'm Carol Hildebrand. I'm a resident of Council Poling's Ward, and as a neighbor and a patron of the Sheldon Branch Library, I want to thank the Budget Committee and the staff for finding a way to keep the Bethel Library open on an ongoing basis, and the Sheldon Library open at least for one more year. Earlier this year, I heard from lots of Sheldon neighbors about how important this library is to them. And a full schedule at the Downtown Library serves even more people, so we regret the proposal that, the budget this year that reduces the hours for the Downtown Library. So we're asking that you adopt, I'm asking that you adopt the budget as proposed for next year, and many library advocates are already urging that we put a library levy on for the fiscal 2015, 2016 year. People are stopping us in the street and saying, when is the levy going to be and how can I help? So thank you for all that you're doing for the city, and we look forward to working together with you.
Thank you. Juan Carlos Valle is next, followed by Connie Regali.
Good evening, councilors and city manager. Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Juan Carlos Valle. I am the immediate past president of the Board at Centro Latinoamericano, member of the Police Commission, City Club of Eugene, and proud Rotarian. I live in Ward 2. I'm speaking tonight as a council president of the League of United Latin American Citizens of Lane County, LULAC. LULAC is a national civil rights and advocacy organization, established in 1929 to advance the economic condition, educational attainment, political influence, housing, health, and of course, civil rights of the Hispanic population in the United States. In general, there is not many government entities that are trusted by underrepresented racial minority groups, particularly the Latino population. Very few departments within public entities are considered to be safe and trusted to engage, ask information, file a complaint, and seek services and advocacy. The Human Rights Center, with its limited resources, has played the role of an accessible and trusted place for many of our families and individuals. I, along with advocacy organizations and representatives, urge you to support the preservation of the public service officer position at the Human Rights Center. Although the position's not officially a bilingual and cultural position, the current level of service is provided in a linguistic and culturally appropriate manner, and it has been giving the center the ability to remain an access point and to facilitate the mission of not only the center, but also the City Council goals. At the end of the day, we need to continue to find ways to fulfill our self prophecy of being a human rights city. The bilingual, bicultural staff position at the center has been an integral access point for Latino families, and I ask for your support preserving this important access point. The City Manager received a letter from Calc, received another letter from many people, including LULAC, co-signed by members, representatives of the Immigrant Network, Kamino Urbina Leader, and representative from Downtown Languages, Eduardo de la Familia. I ask you to consider to read that letter you received today. For your service and your time, I thank you.
Thank you. Connie Regali is next, followed by Ken Beeson.
Connie Regali, I live in the Sheldon area. Ladies and gentlemen, I am here one more time to address you regarding the importance of maintaining vital library services. As a Sheldon Branch supporter, my emphasis last time was to persuade you to keep the Sheldon Branch open, and I spoke on behalf of three groups: senior citizens, low-income citizens, and children, all of whom use the branch and would find it difficult to be here to plead their case, much less use the Downtown Library on a regular basis. However, I recently became president of the Friends of the Eugene Public Library, so my scope moves beyond merely the Sheldon Branch. I speak for our many Friends members, but library supporters in general. With budget in mind, we urge a return to regular library Sunday hours, keeping the Sheldon Branch open on a permanent basis, and putting a levy on the ballot allowing citizens to support these causes. As I've said in the past, library services have to be one of the best bang for the buck there is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ken Beeson is next, followed by Rose Wilde.
Mayor Piercy, councilors? My name is Ken Beeson. I reside in Ward 2. I'm a citizen member of the Budget Committee. I'm also a new member of the Human Services Commission, just appointed last month. I have two comments on the proposed budget. These comments are my own, and I'm not representing the Budget Committee or the HSC. First, I'm here to express support for the FY15 budget and encourage your approval. Over the past year, I think we've effectively addressed a shortfall between the revenue and program costs, and I, and we successfully implemented a review process across the community that allowed interested citizens to provide us with input and perspective in the process. I believe we'll see similar revenue shortfalls over the next several years, and we'll need to find some ways to adjust city program costs to allow for long-term and sustainable alignment of the costs and the revenues. I think we should consider using the review process, or some variation of it, we developed this year, as needed over the next several years. I also want to comment on the HSC funding for this year. While I support the proposed budget, I'm concerned that some portion of the city contribution of the HSC fund continues each year to be on the final reduction list. And also, that final approved amount continues to decrease each year, and is now substantially lower than it was just a few years ago. I want to suggest that the council and/or the Budget Committee consider spending time early in the next budget process and reviewing relative priorities, and talk specifically in that review about HSC funding, and look for opportunities to not only stabilize the funding, but if possible, to increase it to levels of previous years. I make a couple of points in support of that suggestion. The HSC support is not a large part of the general fund budget for the city. The budget we're considering this year, including the one-time funds, is less than one percent of the general fund. Also, these funds, as you know, are combined with funds from Springfield and Lane County, and then distributed to local nonprofits that can provide these services capably and directly. Having these funds allows the nonprofits to secure additional funds from other sources, and by the same token, when the city funds are reduced, it can restrict the nonprofit's ability to secure more funding. I also believe, when we reduce these funds, we reduce our community's capability to be proactive in these service areas, and as a result, I believe our reactive costs, if you will, those public safety-related costs for police and emergency support, will increase. I thank you, Eugene. Those are my comments, and thanks for the opportunity.
Last up is Rose Wilde.
Thank you so much for having me. And thanks, Ken. That was great. My name's Rose Wilde, and I've been on the Human Services Commission for the last six years. I'm the chair this year, and I do that in my capacity as an appointed member to the Lane County Budget Committee. So I know how much work goes into making a budget, and I appreciate especially how much work you and your citizen members did this year. I know it was a year-long process. Eugene does have a longstanding commitment to helping people in need, and has long been a significant contributor to our inter-jurisdictional funding for supporting human needs through the Human Services Commission. And you saw the memo dated May 19, which I wrote with help from other members on the Human Services Commission and staff, summarizing this current situation. So what I'll say is that this year, with the proposed budget originally cut two hundred and fifty thousand from the base level of human services funding, and then added it back in as a one-time payment, and I know it may seem like it's a semantic difference, but I mean, I wouldn't be here if it was only a semantic difference, because every time those funds are threatened, you have a whole bunch of people worrying about their jobs. And so a hundred seventy-five thousand in one-time funding was cut from this year's budget already, and that's probably four people's jobs, if you put it all together and it's one agency. So that's not insignificant. I know FTE is not presented when it's not city staff, but I wanted to give you some perspective. An additional two hundred and fifty thousand, that could be another three or four jobs right there. So it's, it is a significant impact on our community. And just to give you some percentages, it looks to me like it would be a cut of sixteen point nine percent just for the hundred and seventy-five thousand, or forty-one percent if you were not able to restore that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that just seems out of step with the culture and values of the people of Eugene, as well as this council. So I urge you to do a simple thing that will cost you nothing, which is simply to remove that one-time designation for this upcoming budget. Everything's on the table next year. You have to come up with a balanced budget in light of what revenue you have, but I am happy to volunteer for whichever revenue campaign makes the cut, as you know I have done before, to try to make the pie a little bit bigger for everyone. I believe these services are extremely valuable and important, so I hope that you will please adjust that base level of funding, and thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for questions or comments from City Council. See none? Does any councillor object to taking action tonight? Edap, council president?
I move to adopt Resolution 5106, electing to receive state revenue sharing funds pursuant to Section 221-770 of Oregon Revised Statutes.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven. Counselor Soret?
Claire?
Yeah, can you vote?
Yes.
Sorry. I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Council President?
I move to adopt Resolution 5107, certifying that the City of Eugene provide the municipal services required by Oregon Revised Statutes, Section 221, Period 760.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Counselor Soret?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Council President?
I move to adopt Resolution 5108, adopting the-
I move to adopt Resolution 5108, adopting the budget, making appropriations, determining, levying, and categorizing the annual ad valorem property tax for the city of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. I am going to adjourn the meeting of Eugene City Council, convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. This is again about a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Eugene adopting the budget. The manager?
Thank you, mayor. This public hearing is to provide the Urban Renewal Agency Board with an opportunity to hear from the public on the FY15 proposed Urban Renewal Agency budget, as approved by the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee unanimously passed a motion to recommend the URA budget without changes. The board is asked to take action on this item tonight.
Thank you. Open that hearing, and we have one person signed up, John Borowski.
Who that might be? Good evening again. John Borowski, Ward Three. I sometimes like to think of the Urban Renewal Agency's budget as the little brother to the general fund budget, and I just want to bring up a couple of things that are coming It's my opinion that the Riverfront Research Urban Renewal Agency, or District, that little brother is going to be coming of age in the next few years. We've kind of have sat on the back burner with that one for years and years, and just watched money kind of accumulate. And I think we're getting to the point where some really exciting things are going to be happening in that area. Through the good work of the city manager and the people at EWEB, there was an agreement made to help shore up funding through the silt, accommodation, so that we know what we're getting, they know what they're getting. And also, there was talks between them about park down on the riverfront with EWEB stepping up and helping to fund and maintain that park for a period of time, with the city having to probably put in some money as well to develop the park. But with the EWEB master plan being approved by council, with EWEB moving forward, with asking for development, there is going to be some opportunities coming forward where public involvement is going to be needed. And that's where the Riverfront Urban Renewal District is going to come in as a very valuable tool. So, going forward, there is a balance in that account of about $8.1 million. We really haven't done much with it over the years, but I think in the future, you're going to start seeing some uses for that money. And I think it's going to be good uses, and I think it's going to be one of the tools that you have in your toolbox to help turn the EWEB property and some of the other areas in that Riverfront Urban Renewal District to come to fruition, instead of just laying dormant like the little brother has been for all these years. And one of these days, he's going to come up, and he's going to knock you right in the knee and say, "Look at me." And I'm looking forward to that day, and I just wanted to speak to this.
Thank you. Close the hearing, ask if there are any questions or comments from council. I'm going to ask if any councillor objects to taking action tonight. Okay, so let's go with the motion. President?
I move to adopt Resolution 1072, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Eugene, adopting the budget and making appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. So, adjourn the meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene the meeting of Eugene City Council. We're moving on to action item number eight, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Council president, we'll start with the Budget Committee.
I move to reappoint Ken Beeson to Position One on the Budget Committee for a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Seconded.
Not too late.
Discussion. All right. All those in favor, please indicate. Okay, Councillor Surratt? Councillor Surratt?
Sorry, I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Next up?
I move to reappoint Chelsea Clinton to Position Two on the Budget Committee for a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Council president?
I move to appoint Joshua Scove to Position Seven on the Budget Committee for a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Mayor.
Councillor Pauling?
I move to substitute Anthony Lamarche.
This is Budget Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Had the wrong page.
Okay, so it's Josh Scove. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
All right. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Now, we're going to the TIA Civilian Review Board.
I move to reappoint Eric Van Houten to Position One on the Civilian Review Board for a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Next up?
I move to appoint Maury Denner to Position Two on the Civilian Review Board for a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Is there a second?
Well, okay, I'll second, but I want to make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead. Make your motion. Move and seconded.
I move to substitute Raquel Act.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So, all those in favor, did you want to speak to that?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to say that I, Mr. Denner served with great, you know, care for a number of years in the original Police Commission work to help set that up, and has real experience, understanding, and knowledge there. And as a principal for years in grade schools in our community, has a real fair, balanced sort of approach, and I really appreciate that about him, and I hope my colleagues consider supporting him.
We're going to the motion, substitute motion here from Councillor Taylor. We're voting on. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Three in favor and opposition. One, two, three, four, five. It goes down. We're back to the original motion with Mr. Denner. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Seven in favor and opposition. One, it passes. Now, we're moving on to the Historic Review Board.
I move to reappoint Kay Porter to Position Three on the Historic Review Board for a four-year term, beginning July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2018.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. The next one?
I move to appoint Sarah Schmigelski to Position Five on the Historic Review Board for a four-year term, beginning July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2018.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Passes. All right. Next up is the Human Rights Commission. Council president?
I move to reappoint Richie Weinman to Position One on the Human Rights Commission, a three-year term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Passes. Next up?
I move to reappoint Christopher Nunez to Position Two on the Human Rights Commission, a three-year term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Surratt? Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Next?
I move to reappoint Ken Newbeck to Position Three on the Human Rights Commission, a three-year term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Next up?
I move to appoint Arias Seligman to Position Four on the Human Rights Commission for a three-year term, beginning on July 1, 2013, and ending on June 30, 2016.
Moved and seconded. Moved and seconded.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to appoint Jennifer Friendser-Nolton.
There is a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so the replacement motion is Jennifer Nolton. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three. In opposition. Oh, Councillor Surratt?
I vote yes.
Four in favor. In opposition. One, two, three, four. Oh, boy. I like both of them, but I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote, is this the, this is the substitute motion, right?
Right.
I'm going to vote yes. Five in favor and none and four in opposition. It passes. I mean, four, yeah, five and four. All right, La Rapa?
We have to vote on the main.
Oh, on the main motion. Okay. All those in favor of the, the main motion is substituted? One, two, three.
For Jennifer.
Jennifer. One, two, three, four, five, six. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Opposed.
One of opposed. Okay. Right. La Rapa?
I move to reappoint Scott Lucas to Position Two on the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency for a three-year term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Next up?
I move to reappoint Janine Parisi to Position Four on the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency for a three-year term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Now, we're on to the Planning Commission.
I move to appoint Kristen Taylor to Position Four on the Planning Commission for a four-year term, beginning July 1, 2013, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Passes. Next up?
I move to reappoint John Jaworski to Position Five on the Planning Commission for a four-year term, beginning July 1, 2013, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Sustainability Commission.
I move to appoint David Tam to Position One on the Sustainability Commission for a partial term, beginning July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded.
Mayor?
I move to appoint Justin Overdevis.
There is a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, the substitute motion, please indicate. One, two. And, Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Yes, three. In opposition. One, two, three, four, five. It does not pass. We're back to David Tam. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Passes. We're now on to the Toxics Board.
I move to appoint Amber Everly to Position Two, an industry representative on the Toxics Board for a three-year term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Next up?
I move to reappoint Lisa Arkin to Position Four, an advocacy representative on the Toxics Board for a three-year term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Yes, eight in favor and none in opposition. Passes.
I move to appoint Andre Phelps to Position Seven, a neutral representative on the Toxics Board for a three-year term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. So, now, we're on to the Willamette National Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee. Council president?
I move to reappoint Teresa Brand to Position One on the Willamette National Area Citizen Planning Committee for a term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Passes. Next up?
I move to appoint Allison Kemp to Position Two on the Willamette National Area Citizen Planning Committee for a term, beginning on July 1, 2014, and ending on June 30, 2017.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Councillor Surratt? Did you say yes?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition. Passes. Next up?